Good evening. We're going to call the Foxborough School Committee meeting to order on April 4th at 7 o'clock, 7:05. Foxborough High School Meeting Center. The agenda for this evening is as follows. 7 o'clock visitors, 7:05 approval of minutes, 7:10 FHS National Honor Society Project, Mr. Eddie Lincoln, 7:20 School-to-Career Partnership Update on Events, Ms. Ellen Pillsbury, 7:35 First Reading of Policies, Ms. Beverly Lord, Ms. Kate Kaminsky, 7:12, I'm sorry, 7:55 FY-12 Budget Discussion and Approval, Dr. Christopher Mardis, Mr. Paul Jackson, 8:15 FY-11 Monthly Budget Summary, Dr. Christopher Mardis, Mr. Paul Jackson, 8:30 Other Matters, 8:40 Executive Session to Discuss Strategies with Respect to Collective Bargaining and Contract Agreements with Non-Union Personnel. As an open meeting may be a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, the committee will not return to open session. 7 o'clock visitors. Do you have any visitors that wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the approval of minutes. Looking at the March 21st. Minutes, any changes?
I make the motion to accept. I'll second.
I have one just change that under the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards, I thought it would be nice if we could include all the names of all the students who received awards. I don't know if we normally do that or not. When do you-
With that letter goes as an attachment.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's got them all on there.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the minutes? Five zero. Moving on to the March 29th meeting, Joint Meeting with the Board of Selectmen Minutes. One addition that I think we might just want to put, the last sentence that describes the budget option, whether we want to reference that as Plan C.
We have a thing in this, it's not the means text, it's meals text.
Thank you.
I thought of that, Katie, but you know what? It was also so overwrought with A, B, and C, I thought maybe it's better to leave one up alone.
Well, I just thought in addition to what was already, I think it was good that it was actually specified what the plan was, but I didn't know if we wanted, whether we wanted to identify it as Plan C or not. I could go either way, whatever the committee feels might be appropriate.
I think the elements of Plan C are included in the text of the second paragraph, so I think you're probably okay without it, but I think it could go either way. But I agree with the typo in the means versus meals.
Okay. All right. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Did you make a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
Motion approved as amended with the meals, right?
Thank you. Give me a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Okay. And move on to the FHS National Honor Society Project. Mr. Lincoln, if you don't mind taking a seat, and Dr. Mardis?
Sure. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Eddie Lincoln, a senior here at Foxborough High School and a member of the National Honor Society, which I think is a very noble project to share with us tonight. And so, without stealing any of that, Eddie, I'll let you do the honors.
Thank you. And as Dr. Mardis said, my name's Eddie Lincoln, I'm representing National Honor Society, and I'm at this meeting to ask permission to hold a townwide cleanup day on April 16th. And the idea of the day is to clean up like trash around the schools and other public areas, and like look with cleanup like the litter lying around. And it's, the day will include the Foxborough High School Spring Sports Teams, the Foxborough High School NHS, some other groups, and Foxborough High School, the Ahern Middle School Student Council, and some of the elementary schools, some volunteers from the elementary schools. And in addition to asking permission to clean up the areas, we'd also like to throw away, possibly use the dumpsters at the schools to throw away the trash that's picked up.
I think that could be arranged. That's great.
That's a good idea, actually.
That's where it belongs.
Yeah.
That's where it should be. If we have to have an extra, we can call.
Can you coordinate that?
Absolutely, yes, we'll coordinate that.
What a wonderful project.
Thank you.
This was actually started last year, so you're continuing the effort? And you got the job as the coordinator, I think Pat Mitchell did.
Yeah, two years ago it was Pat Mitchell, and then, I'm not sure who did it last year, but yeah, it's starting to be like-
But you're continuing the new tradition of this service.
Yeah.
And let me say, it's not just a great service, it's also a great opportunity, I think, to model leadership behavior to our younger students, and it's really exciting how you got also the Ahern and our elementary schools involved. I think that's really great.
Thank you.
Do you know how many students have participated in this in years past? It sounds like it's going to be a large number, if you're including all the spring team, sports teams, the councils, the elementary-
Yeah, we're trying to get as many people as we can. Two years ago, I know there was, that was a good amount because they also included like, we have some neighborhood groups that joined in, I don't know the number exactly, but there was, I think there was like over 100 probably.
Wow.
People, I'm pretty sure, like including all sports teams and everything. So, we're not going to be that high, but we should have a good amount of people this year.
Will you be doing town areas too?
I just wonder what time you'd be-
It should, it will start at 10:00 AM and then just go until, yeah, whenever cleaned up. But yeah, the, we're planning on having like, the IGO, like have like the elementary schools clean up their own schools, and then like the lacrosse team, the lacrosse teams could possibly go to, we're thinking maybe go to Payson Field where the games are, and then clean up that area, and maybe even down, if they have enough people, down to Ernie George Field. And then the other, the other organizations with the high school, clean up around the high school and around the booth, so.
Right.
And the Ahern, clean up the Ahern.
Will you do any other areas in town, or any other, on any other town property?
Yeah, if we have, if there's teams, enough teams that like want to help out, then yeah, I think we could move to the common.
So you'd also have to go in front of the Board of Selectmen to get their okay with that?
Okay.
I think, I think that's what we usually do, yes.
Okay.
You know, contact Kevin Pecos, the town manager, so to, if you don't have to speak in front of them, then he can do that as an action item, so that you're, all types of town property are covered. I know they're doing last year and the year before, so that, it shouldn't be a problem.
The committee can give you permission to do the schools, around the schools, and you may also want, just thinking about the booth, you may also want to check in with Pack and Rec.
Yep.
Just to make sure that they're, I mean, I don't think anyone's saying no to this.
No, it's just personal, so that everybody is in-
Just everyone, yeah. And you'll get some good press tonight, I think, on it too, so.
And there's a selectmen's meeting tomorrow evening, right?
Selectmen's meeting tomorrow, right.
So, maybe if you made a phone call, because it's coming up, right, the 16th?
Yeah, I can go tomorrow and-
To the Town Hall, they might be able to-
Okay.
Especially with all these dates coming up.
Yeah.
You could probably, since the agenda's already posted, you could do it under visitors, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like a wonderful idea.
Do you need a motion from us, or?
Yeah.
I think so. I think an acknowledgement and a motion, I think would be very nice.
Okay, I make a motion that the Foxborough National Honor Society and their affiliates be allowed to-
Affiliates, I like that.
Okay.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much, and for doing that, for doing this, the rest of the volunteers.
I think we've had, the last time, I think we've donated plastic trash bags and gloves and things, Paul.
Yeah.
So we'll just make sure, Eddie, just connect with us in the central office and Michael area.
Yeah, I'll, okay.
We'll make sure it's all taken care of.
Yeah, I'll be in contact.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move to School-to-Career Partnership Update on Events, Ms. Ellen Pillsbury.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ellen Pillsbury, and I work for the Edible Area School-to-Career Partnership, and I am housed at Foxborough High. In May, I will be there 12 years. I've been doing this, so we just keep moving and cruising. I just wanted to give you a little recap of where we were, what we've done this year to date. Last Thursday, Debbie stopped by, I pulled together an event for 250 high school students, 70, 75 of them were from Foxborough, and the balance were from Norton, North Attleboro, and Attleboro. We had 85 volunteers for the event, and they were bankers from Bristol County, Northeastern Savings Bank, Webster Bank, TD Bank, Foxborough Federal, and then assorted financial planners. And prior to, about a month ago, the kids picked a profession, I assigned that profession and income, and the kids did not know what their income was until the day of the event. And to further show them how finances work, they could sign up for credit cards before the event. If they signed up before the event, they got a candy bar. And that was so that, because most children when they get to college and they sign up for a credit card, it's because they're getting a free towel, or they're getting something free. So, and they don't read the bottom line, as they did not with me, so I gave out lots of candy bars. And afterwards, they were in Mr. McCabe's business class, and they were reading through after they signed, and they came back with their candy bar in hand and said, can I trade it in? And I said, no, you now own the credit card, that's your problem. So they get to the event, they get their schedule, and they had 13 different booths, housing, clothing, food and nutrition, luxury, and they had to go to each booth, and they had to buy a plan. It's not like they could go to the housing booth and say, I'm living with my mother. Well, if you're living with your mother, you're paying your mother rent. If you want a room with somebody, you have to split that rent in half, but you'll have to buy a food plan, and you have to buy insurance and all that kind of stuff. And if the girls got to luxury and they say, I'm not buying anything, well, they have cell phones, the girl's nails are done, and their hair has died, so you are going to be charged. So as they go through, and they're finding they are not doing very well, they go visit the financial planners, and they say, well, you shouldn't have bought the Mercedes, go back and buy that Toyota. And the kids are like, oh, you gotta be kidding me. Or if there's a recession and they go for a job, well, we would have specials throughout the event, you know, there's a recession, there are no more jobs available, and you see kids that are 30 deep waiting for an extra job to get through the fair. So, it was a very good life lesson for them, they got it. The feedback on our crew from Foxborough, and I'm very pleased to say, the professionals there were, felt our children were very aware of money, of how to budget, came dressed professionally, because there was a dress clause in this, and every parent signed the slip, and if they didn't come dressed, they were left. End of discussion. Yes, Bev, I know it's horrible, but they-
I love it, I love it, I'm loving it.
John McCabe and I had this, had a discussion before, if they were not professionally dressed, they were to be left. These are business professional people, they are representing Foxborough, they are representing me, they will be dressed or they cannot come. So, they were very pleased with us, I must say, and the kids got a lot out of the day. They have been coming in and thanking me for the event, so it was a success, we will do it again next year. Last year, we had 250 Foxborough kids, this year it was only 75, because they had to split the other schools and invite them as well. They were all very jealous last year that they were not invited. So, being a partnership, we serve as four schools, everybody participates. My CNA students have all passed, we had three CNA students, two seniors and one junior, have taken the state exam, they have passed. There was a fee this year of $250 for them to participate in the program. We will be running another program in the fall, and another one next spring. So, there will be a fee attached to that, we're trying, going to try to see about getting funding from some grants, Christine will be running some grants, my boss, so we'll see, but we will be running, I already have a list of 15 children onboard. I only have three seats in the fall and three in the spring, so I will be sitting with Lorraine and the guidance staff on how we're going to pick those students. It's not any, it's not every student going into nursing, some kids that are not going on to school and need a profession come into the program as well. Technology updates, oh, let me backtrack, EMT. We have two students currently in a paramedic EMT class out of Attleboro, North Attleboro. We, in the past, have had nine students, we currently have, that have passed and taken the test. We currently have three, and we will have three this summer that are planning on taking the test. So we'll see how they do, they do keep in touch with me. There is a second level paramedic class, but that's $7,000 that they have to pay, it's a nine-month class, so we will see where that leads. I'm offering that as well, it's, you know, an expensive course, but sometimes if kids are not going to school and they need a profession, they will go on to that. Also, students that have not gotten into our CNA program, because we don't have seats for them, I've had five or six of them sign up, they're going to do it through community visiting nurses in Attleboro. It's a free class, but they do owe 12 weeks of employment afterwards as a visiting nurse, so, as a, as a CNA for the visiting nurse, yes.
I'm just curious, how much is the course for the EMT?
$750, but very well worth it.
Okay.
My son has gone through it, and he is a parent, he's a basic EMT up at college, and he's making $15 an hour on the weekends, working, so.
Nice.
The money's very nice, from a parent's point of view. And our CNAs are all employed, making anywhere from 12 to 18 an hour, depending on what shift they're working. And the, two of them will be going on a nursing school, one's only a junior, so she will have all next year to work as a CNA and get one for college, which is very nice. Construction Career Day is coming up, that's in May. In the past, we have taken 15 students a year, this year I have 18 seats, those seats, I have a list of 30 students, only 18 will be able to come, because the partnership is given only a certain amount of seats. Again, it's an event that we have to share among schools. Patty Young will be coming with me this year from administration. I've had Bert and Joe in the past, they think it's a great day, so if anybody would like to come to Construction Career Day in Hopkinton. It's for students that aren't necessarily going on to college, or are looking to get into the trades, or are going to college with a degree in construction engineering and that type of thing. There's masonry, there's welding, there's paving, different types of engineers that the kids can talk to that day, it's a very hands-on day. It's a day that the kids here have talked about for years and years, they get hard hats and they come in the next day ranting and raving what a great day it was. So, we will be participating in that on May 4th for this coming year. Future Educators Day was two weeks ago, March was a very busy month for the partnership. We had three big events, Credit Fair was one, Future Educators Day was another day at Bridgewater State College with Mary Price. I took 20 kids with us that are all going into education, whether it was elementary ed, secondary, or special education. And it really was a good day, I took Lorraine with me this year, she has not gone with me in the past, and they get to see teachers in action, there's a science teacher that sings his lessons to his class, and he greets every student at the door every day and asks them how their day is, and he told the kids a story that when his daughter was going to school, she came home one day and said, he said, how was your day at school? And she said, good. And he said, who'd you sit with? And she said, nobody. And he said, well, who'd you have lunch with? And she said, nobody. And he said, who'd you play with at school? And she said, nobody. And who'd you sit with on the bus? Well, nobody. And all the kids were sitting there, and they were just devastated, and it turns out his daughter is a special needs student, and nobody wanted to sit with her and be social with her because she was different. So he has made it a point in his day to greet every student, every day. And as the kids went out, they all went up to him and said, thank you for coming for the day. So, he was a real light for the day, and he sings all his lessons, and he's very animated, and the kids got a lot out of that day. We spoke to some future teachers, they came and told us about education and what to look for, and we spoke to some current professors in special ed, which was very beneficial to the kids. Future Nurses Day was also in March, and that was at Sturdy Memorial Hospital. We had 20 students go, all in the medical field, they were either going to be going into laboratory work, doctors, nurses. They got a tour of Sturdy, they got to talk to different people in the hospital at Sturdy, and learned what kind of background they would need, how people changed from one career to another career in the hospital, and had advanced, and it was a good day for the kids. They got a lot out of the day. We did not see any babies that day, I was a little disappointed. Currently, I have placed probably about 120 kids in after-school jobs. The economy is not great, I must tell you, it is, it's tough finding them, but I do work with employers, if kids come in and have a specific job that they're looking for or field, I do get on the phone and I do call. Normandy Farms just did a huge hiring, I sent applications up, had the kids fill them out for, dropped them off, called all the kids down for, told them the dress code for going for an interview, what to say, kind of walked them through it, and I did the follow-up, and they did the follow-up after the interviews. So, quite a few of our kids got employed at Normandy Farms a few weeks ago.
That's great.
I do counsel the kids when they go on these interviews, what to say, how to dress, how to follow up, because they'll often just fill out an application and then just never follow up, and then they come in and they say, I've never heard anything. Well, I wouldn't hire you either. So, we need to work on the follow-up. I am still doing internships for students that are out of college, even though that's really not part of my job. There is a certain population that comes back in November and says, Ms. P., I'm going to be looking for a job, I'm now a junior, I need to do an internship, what can you do? They send me a resume, I send the resume out. They've been hired five or six already for the summer, which is a good thing. So, we just keep trucking along on that. And I will continue to work through the balance of the school year on after-school jobs and internships for our kids here at the high school. That does not end, even if I'm on a project, I will be doing that as well. This past, when Kelly Akacha was here with Mr. Roy, they did Portfolio Day, and I went in with Kelly and her husband, and it was a magnificent day for our art kids, they did very well, and I have to tell you, as a town, we should be very proud of our art department. They, the accolades that Tom Grossmith got on his portfolio at Portfolio Day, because I was assigned to Tom, and I followed Tom to all the colleges that he was interested in, was phenomenal. And I stood back, and he did all the talking, and he presented himself very well, and they were very impressed with his skills. And the admissions people at these art schools said that our kids are above the average with their, their art skills, and it's only because of our art department being as well advanced with the technology that they have. So, I, on that note, I did say to Jerry this year, what kind of software would you like? Because every year we try to update Jerry, and I think he's going to go for writing tablets, they just make it easier, I guess, to manipulate editing software. So I said, get your quote together, I will get it out there, and I will see about getting it funded, along with Mr. DeBona. Ralph gave me some updates for his CAD lab, which he would like, which I always get every year. So, I'm still working on that, and that will be, we'll probably know by May or June where we stand on that. One of our new projects here at the high school for May, for January of 2012 is Challenge Day. Erin Healy-Patello came up with this, I don't know where Erin found it. It is a program for high school students, learning to accept others that are different than you. So what we are doing is, it's a $10,000 program, it's two days, it's a company that comes in from California, and they train the trainers. So, they're going to come in, they train us, they train 100 of our kids one day, 100 of our kids the next day, so it's a, it's a two-day event, they train 100 kids a day, and those children, Jeff and I and Lorraine and Erin have sat down, will train another 200 kids, who will train another 200 kids, who will train another 200 kids. And it's just-
It's the whole high school.
It's, it's a phenomenal program, and they have it on, I don't know how many of you watch MTV, but it is off of MTV called Challenge Day Program. If you get on challengeday.com, you will find it. So, I'm currently working on funding, I'm pretty sure I have it wrapped up, but Credit Fair kind of got in the way there, so I put it on the back burner, and I'm back on it next week. So, I will confirm funding, and then we will sign contracts, Jeff will sign the contracts. And this was something that Erin came up with, and Lorraine was hot on, and they asked me to jump on board, and I'm more than happy to do that. Those are the challenges I like to do in my job, makes my everyday job a little bit more exciting here at the high school, so.
Ellen, could you just comment on that a little bit more? So once the kids are trained, what do they do?
They, well, it's teaching, it's not only an anti-bullying program, but it's, you're an art kid, you're not a jock, you're not a music kid, where do you fit in, how to be accepting of those and treat people with respect, and treat people the way you want to be treated. It's an awareness program, and we are going to start with 100 kids out of the sophomore class, and I think the junior class, and then we'll train the freshmen, and then we'll go back and train the balance of the juniors and sophomores. Seniors really won't be in it, because they will be going out the door. And then, the following year, when the freshmen come up, they will be trained by upperclassmen as well. So Jeff sees it as an ongoing program here at the high school, and it fits in with their Warrior Huddle program that they now have here up at the high school. So, it all interconnects. It's really an exciting program, and they're excited to come out, and we're excited to have them. In the fall, I did Universal Technologies up in Norwood, it's for car and motor engine repair. We had 20 kids go with me. Again, some of the kids will be going in September, they're not going to be going on to college, but they are going to go on to a technical school, which is great, and they're looking forward to going. So, that, we did again this year. Transition Night was a big hit, that was in November. When we did it three years ago here, because it rotates every year, a different school system takes it on, this year was my year to take it on at Foxborough, I had over 150 parents here, from all over. We just, we were on Facebook, we didn't even know how old the parents heard about it, but I worked with Mar Cheyson, who is our special needs PAC president, and I sent it to her, she sent it to somebody else, they sent it to somebody else, I mean, we had people, Debbie stopped down that night.
I thought that was wonderful.
That was-
That was so busy, I mean, people, the information people were getting about how do they get life insurance for their children, what happens with services afterwards, you know, after the age of 22. I thought it was really valuable, just from, people are from all walks of life, and even knowing people have been in that situation, you do feel like, I described it as jumping out of the plane without a parachute when your child ages out at 22, so what's going to happen to them, and what opportunities are there that can assist the family. So I thought, that was wonderful.
It was quite impressive, the people that were there, the agencies were there, I had 23 different agencies, and they were very impressed, and they said it was the best transition night that they had ever seen. We had people from the North Shore, from the South Shore, I mean, we had people from New Hampshire, and I was like, whoa, how did you guys hear? And they said, well, don't you know you're on Facebook? Well, the age of the internet is a very nice thing. So, next year, I think it's hosted at Attleboro High. I don't know, they'll get started on that, I just, I did mine this year. So, I thought we did a real great job, and we made a lot of connections, and the parents were thrilled, so it worked out really, really well for us. I think that's it. Oh, and just one other thing, we are up for our NEESK visit next year, which is a, it is an exciting thing. I went out, even though I'm not a school employee, I was asked to go out last year, I got to go up to Gloucester High School, and that's where I did my NEESK visit, and I was on the community relations team, because of my background, they thought it would be quite apropos. I had a great time, I would be a professional NEESker if they asked me to be.
Is anybody listening?
I, I loved it, I just thought it was the best thing going. So I am heading that team here in Foxborough for our team for next year- So I am heading that team here in Foxborough for our team for next year's evaluation. So John McCabe and I are the community relations team, which is very exciting, and I think we'll do real well. So Christine Melova just went out on, she's out this week on that team, so it'll be very interesting. I can't wait till she gets back.
I think four or five people from high school have been on visiting teams. So that can only help, because you get a better sense of what's going to be.
Yeah, and it's really a valuable experience. It's just a nice event. I would truly be a professional one if there was ever an opening, I would go in a heartbeat, in a heartbeat. But that's school-to-work. I am here Monday to Thursday, from 7:00 to 2:00. Christine is writing grants for next year. We'll see how that goes, because we are funded by grant money. And grant money, just so that you all understand, because I don't know how many of you understand, I am not a school employee. I am part of the partnership, which is a nonprofit. Foxborough pays an assessment to the partnership. The partnership puts me here. I am glad to be here. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And so we will see when, you know, when Chris writes, what the story is. But I am hoping to be back. Not, I have not heard I'm not coming back, so that's a good thing, so.
So impressive, Ellen, all the programs.
Thanks.
All the lives that you touch through these programs. I mean, the numbers, it's just, it's giving these kids opportunities, not only, you know, to see things that they like, but see things that they don't like. I mean, they can go, they can be a CNA and decide, "You know what? Nursing's not for me," or, you know, whatever. I mean, not to say that they normally do that, but, you know, I mean, it is a great opportunity to get a taste of these different professions and decide if that's a course they want to follow.
Well, it is, and that's what the Job Shadow Program is all about, and I am still sending kids out in job shadows that's kind of taking the backseat, because Credit Fair took up a huge amount of my time this year, as is any major event that I do, but I will be sending more kids out April, May, and June to shadow in those fields. And sometimes they do come back, and they say, "Ah, that's not for me." I mean, to find out that you don't want to touch people if you're going to be a nurturer in your own field. You better find something else. Or kids realize that they want to do art, and they don't want to go into engineering or communications or that type of thing. So it is a good thing.
Just a lot of diverse programs that you offer, and a lot, you know, so many students that are involved in these programs, and, you know, so many of them supported by grants, and so.
And it's nice to be here. It's really, I love my job. I love being here with the kids. They make every day an enjoyable day for me, and no two days are the same for me, which I really like, so.
I just want to say about the Credit Fair, it was impressive again, you know, this year as it was last year. But I also noticed, maybe it was me, but I thought that we had such a presence of our Foxborough High School staff there, guidance, teachers, is, you know, in addition to you. To me, not that I would recognize people from the other town, but I thought there were so many Foxborough High School staff people there in support. I think that's to our credit as well. Didn't appear to me that there were as many from the other schools. Maybe that was my impression.
No, you are absolutely correct.
Okay, so I want to commend those people too.
Yes, and.
Because, you know, they're taking time out of their teaching day to be there at something important. And I just thought that Credit Fair was such a reality check.
It is.
And the things that the kids were saying with their clipboards, I stopped a couple of kids, they happened to be from Norton, they were great. And one of them was very proud, because he'd only come in $34 over budget for the month. He said, "I did all right." He had $34 circled. I said, "So if this were to happen in real life, what are you going to do?" So it's like, "Well, I'm going to eat out." You know, they definitely understood the whole, everything that they were doing, and were quite excited and interested in, wanted to explain it to people. So I thought it was great.
Well, the Credit Fair, let me just expand upon that for a second. There were two people from, two administrators from North Attleboro that were there, plus my team from Foxborough. And I must say, the reason why school-to-work works so well here in this system and is such a success is because of the support that I get, not only from you as a school committee board, but from Jeff and the staff in this high school. They get it. They have seen me, they welcomed me 12 years ago. They have seen the programs we put on. They see that it comes back to them tenfold in their students. And when I run an event, all you have to do is say, "Can you come," or "Can you help out?" And they are there.
I actually had about 10 people there.
I had eight administrators, yes, and they all got a candy bar wrapped in a $10,000 bill.
No credit card, right?
Well, I want to say a lot of administrators, that's what they were designing. We got a couple of teachers from English Department, Jim McCabe, so, you know, staff members.
Staff members.
I think I was, you weren't all eating candy bars, is what I wanted to say.
And they each got a candy bar that was in a wrap, and they said, "Thanks a million" for credit. So I thank the staff, the teaching staff for coming, and it is nice that I am so supported here, because without that support, we would not be where we are, and we would not be successful, because I see it in the other schools.
That was great.
And we, any event we do is a success.
You know, this is another example, when we talk about, how do we find niches for kids at the high school level? How do we find what their interests are? How do we let them explore some of this? And you're right, Ellen, find out that actually, this isn't something I really want to do, which is a good thing to, you know, to do earlier rather than later in life, I think. But the evolution of this program is really incredible. I mean, and you're right, it has to be part of the culture of the school in order for it to work. But it is trying to find places where kids can shine, and the things that they can do, or at least have some interest in. And that's part of pulling the whole educational process together. You know, we talk about athletics, and we talk about music here a lot, and we don't talk about art as much, you're right. But we do have a stellar art program. And then all of the other activities, I'm always impressed, and Ellen, every year comes to me, "Can we fund a couple of more CNAs? Can we do this, and can we do that?" And we try to do whatever we can, because we know the kids are really interested in doing, and doing a lot of these activities. And it gives them, you know, they see connections, which is such.
And they seek me out. Now, I don't have to go, you know, I put flyers on my board for jobs, I do announcements for jobs. They come see me. They know where to find me, and they do make the connection. And they may not know me as a freshman, but you bet your bottom dollar, they know who I am as a junior. The parents know me. I get emails, I get phone calls, the community. It works, because everybody knows about school-to-work. And unless you have the support from the town and the school, I mean, Jeff's building is phenomenal. I mean, the teachers here are just great, and Jeff, anytime I need something, I can go to Jeff and ask, and I, you know, within reason, he gives it to me. He says, "Run with the ball. It's not a problem." And if you don't have that commitment, you're not going to be successful. You're just not. And that is quite evident to me in other aspects that I see in other schools. And that's why I'm very thankful I'm here, because they make my job most comfortable.
I'm very glad that we are going over this again in detail tonight, because this is one more example of how we treat, or try to, as a whole high school, treat each person as an individual and reach their needs. It's not just in your classroom setting, but there are so many extended programs that this public high school offers.
And I didn't mention the PAVE program, but I have set up a program for Dave's kids in the PAVE program, that they go out, and they are employed in paying jobs in the community, and they are, and they rotate through the jobs. The Holiday Inn is a great venue for them. Diane Gallanti's room is too young yet to work, so they're doing a lot of community service projects for me. But as they move up the line, those kids will be out the door in, you know, work situations, and then we'll get them employed as well. So, and I work with kids, I don't, I don't ask if a student is on an IP or not. That is not, as far as I'm concerned, it does not determine whether or not I work with them or not. I work with the entire population here at the high school. So everybody's on the same playing field, as far as I'm concerned. And if I need extra information to make that job a success for them, or that internship, then I ask questions. But until then, I don't ask, because I just move forward, unless it's going to affect a job performance, and I don't need to know, I just don't ask.
That's great. Thanks.
I would like to just say, I think, Katie, you said it best when you said, "Ellen, you touched so many lives." And Dr. Morris linked it to all of our programs, and this is really, it links in to academic achievement. When we are able to give kids an opportunity to explore, some of them actually get better in their grades, because they're turned on to what their occupation may be, or they find out that what they think they might have wanted to go to school for is not that. And, you know, as Ellen says, she's worked across all of our student populations, which it raises the boat for all of them. And whether you're talking about your career, or you're talking about, you know, a student's desperate need to help earn money part-time, all of those services are covered. And I just like to mention that, you know, we have to remember, what Ellen does for us is exceptional, and she's doing more for us with, in essence, less pay. And I just want to reiterate, we decided we couldn't fund all of the CNAs. That was a tough choice. We made that choice. The DOE stopped the funding on the grant three years ago. So Attleboro, Norton, North Attleboro get this, because they're Bristol County. We do not get the funding. So Ellen has not only been cut back each of the three years in her earnings, but she now only works, is paid for the Monday through Thursday. She's also had no increase. So just in the time, as funding continues to get, continue to be difficult in all of our endeavors, I just want us to be aware of that and mindful, because at some point, you know, we see how this is adding and boosting academic achievement for our students, and I just think it's something that, you know, we've enjoyed and we've come used to for 12 years, and I think, Ellen, you do an exceptional job. We may need to plan for that in the future, particularly at the rate in which we continue to lose funding.
That is a good point, because I know we did talk about this last year, about the reduction, and so. Thank you, Katie, for those comments. And thank you, Ellen.
Have a good one. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
We're going to move on to first reading of policies, Ms. Lord and Ms. Kaminski.
My lady. Let's see, we're going to dazzle you, aren't we, Beth? We're going to dazzle them. Okay. May I set this up, Beth, and then?
You may set it up.
We're going to do this in two pieces to make it easier. You have a sheet in front of you. I'd like to just start and reiterate that how we did this is we read each and every policy. And we were really lucky, because we have very talented people, and we figured out that we were going to delegate to all of our talented staff. So again, special thanks, not only, obviously, Jim Hardy of MASC, but to Dr. Morris. He got delegated a little piece to do. We had, Paul Jackson was wonderful. We actually are bringing to you tonight some policies that we had left on hold, and I think policies with the MSBA that were the right policies for us, and that's because of Mr. Jackson. The whole administrative team, not just central administration, but the whole admin team with all of our principals, we had them work very hard to reread, not only the policies where we're making changes, but there are three, two additional new policies you will see tonight, and they have reviewed all of those. Also Sharon Kelly, who helped us with the administering of medicine, that policy, bringing that up to date, because it had gone seriously out of date. And of course Debbie Spinelli, who also got delegated a chunk, and in terms of her busy schedule, still took the time to help.
Exciting reading.
So.
Read the whole book. Yeah, I was going to say.
We're very confident, we're bringing something, oh, I'm going to mention, I'm going to, Martha. We're very confident in what we're bringing to you tonight, but I will add that as we go through, there are some things we will need to come back to you. For instance, we also touched base with Kathy Rangioni, and as the Strategic Planning Committee finishes their piece, our mission and vision may change. So we may need to bring that back to you. There are some other things that, as we go, that may change, so we will renew our commitment to, as they change, to bring them to you both, so that we can vote. So we're not recommending changes on any of the strategic planning, the mission and vision.
Just to think about timing of that, and Beth, and Tina and others are involved, and Debbie, we had a meeting last week and are ready to bring the next iteration to you on our next meeting on the 25th.
Now, we worked very hard at incorporating the suggestions that were brought forward during our joint meeting in December.
Heading down the whole stretch on this. So I think, right. And so that'll be, that'll be a major part of the meeting on the 25th, so that.
It's very exciting. We're just letting you know, we'll come back to you, because we won't forget that.
But there will be a policy piece to it.
But we don't want to preempt that. And they've been very helpful. So to make this quick, the first part of the packet, and I'll have Beth walk you through that. As we read each and every policy, we had, oh, it'll be real easy. We had, basically, when we do a new policy, when the administrative team at MASC brings that to us, and everybody does great cross-referencing. So our new policies, such as wellness and others that were done this year, have beautiful cross-references. But as we're reading other, the policies in their entirety, the older policies did not have the appropriate cross-reference. So this first packet, to make it easier, is just that. Beth, do you just want to, we don't have to, according to MASC, oh, we have the Holy Trinity, MASC, Jim Hardy, Mike Gilbert of MASC, but may I say Wendy Wills, who is, we thank above all? Those do not have to be read, but we'd just like to briefly go through, and you can see the bold, so there's no, there's no problem with that. Do you, Beth, want to walk us through those pages? Is that?
Well, I think everybody has.
Just the titles?
Well, just the titles under purchasing draft, you know, we changed "by the superintendent." Anything, I'm sure they have all read the highlighted.
Oh, yes.
Sometimes it's just, just the insertion of a, you know, superintendent, or designee. I don't really think I have to read everything. Then, rather than "and," we did "and/or." Internal alternative education programs, just to clarify the titling. Most of these, we don't have to read, because we have cross-referenced with the new ones. Many of these are just, if you go through them, they're just cross-referencing.
So, Beth, just so the public knows, because sometimes that's confusing on, we go through a first reading with a new policy or a kind of major revised policy, I guess might be the better way to say it, the first reading and a second reading that the whole committee does. But for these, that are just kind of language issues more than anything else, MASCE is telling us that we don't need to do a first reading and a second reading.
Right, a full reading.
Right, okay. All right. That's fine with me, by the way, but, you know.
You know, we had two things that were listed as education programs, alternative. One is directed internally with philosophy for the students here, then another is external, you know, because it's coping with.
Can you read which one you're on, though?
Okay.
It's like, where is this?
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Just do the titles, let them know which one.
All right, so internal alternative education progress is file IGBH. And that was just the title change for clarification versus about four more along, external alternative education programs, IHBH.
The difference, if you remember, when we were developing policies, we got confused with the title. And as we were rereading, I had to call Jim Hardy and say, "Why do we even have this? Why is it important?" Well, we knew it was a MASC general law, so what was the differentiation? Basically, if we wanted to create a school within a school, the internal alternative education program gives the school committee in Foxborough Public Schools the authority to do so. If we wanted to have our own charter school, we could create that under the external alternative education program, according to MASC general law. So that was the reason and the value, when we thought, "Okay, well, let's have a more correct title, so we can all remember."
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right. Then our next one, JBA, is just cross-referencing again, our student-to-student harassment with the nondiscrimination and bullying prevention. Once again, the prohibition of hazing. We cross-referenced with nondiscrimination, student-to-student harassment and bullying.
Can I ask you a question on this one? So the bold part is the new change down in the middle of the text?
Right.
And is this recommended language to us from MASC?
No, this is not.
This one is not?
This MASC originally bolded in our original policy manual, so we did not change the policy whatsoever.
This paragraph is not a change. This paragraph is not a change?
No, it's not a change. It was just a cross-reference.
Thank you.
And tobacco use, once again, the next one is cross-reference. Once again, alcohol use, cross-reference. Now, administering medicines to students-
If I may interrupt you, Beth, there was a last-minute change. That one, we will be on the first reading, and you have an additional copy, because there was a change.
Right. This is a first reading, so we probably should mention this on the 25th again.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to take questions on that one now, or do you want to do it when you-
We have other drafts, so we'll put, that we will be reading, because they're the first reading. So, we'll save it for that.
So, there's another draft of the one, of the alcohol?
No, administering medicines to students. JLCD.
There was an alcohol and tobacco, it was just cross-referencing.
It's just cross-reference.
The administering medicines, there was a substantial enough change that we're going to move it to the first reading.
Okay. And the, my cut and allergies?
That is also a cross-reference, but I'd like to note that, based on the input from the administrative team, and when you, in your, in the, your policy manuals, there is also a JLCE-a. We are deleting that recommendation, because that is really, it's called the management of life-threatening allergies, and it's general protocols and guidelines rules for specific individuals. And it, and the administrative team concur that it didn't make sense. It made sense when we first did that policy, but it doesn't make sense, because that will, the team will automatically update it for the school's needs. It didn't need to be part of our policy. And the last is visitors to school, so I remember-
Right, cross-referencing, yeah. Observation of special environment.
Okay. Now, those that we do have to read, the executive session, one is in the first English packet. The executive session, we did not touch this. This is a MASC draft, and this is, we felt it really was well-done, and it reflects what needs to, everything is there for, under the new open meeting law, which impacts executive sessions. I will just note as a side note on the minutes, our minutes from MASC are totally updated. In fact, they're identical, except we went one step further, and we said in our minutes that they will be posted on the, on the web, right, on the minutes. So, we went above and beyond, and that, there were no changes there. So, Katie, you would, on these, I do need to read it in its entirety.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
On the first reading, or what it, practice, or we're going to accept it as-
Yeah, I think you could just move to, I don't really think you need to read the whole-
Do you do it by each one, or should we go to the second packet?
Yeah, you take it through, you approve each first reading.
Okay, so you want a motion to waive the reading, the first reading?
No, you want a motion to accept the first reading.
I mean, accept the first reading.
The draft of executive session as-
You don't really have to read it.
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, Martha.
Unless there's a question, we can stop.
Unless, well, if you, if you move in second, and then you discuss, you have opportunity to discuss, and then you vote to approve.
But again, the purpose of this one is to update the new open meeting law.
As it pertains to executive sessions. And this is exactly how it's written by the states.
Okay, good.
And a motion to accept?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, so all those in favor of the first reading, the lead executive session draft? Five zero.
Next is the public participation at school committee meetings. That is BEDH. And we had some feedback, in fact, there had been originally a lot of discussion, and I think through some of the various dis, it had been changed. I will point out the bold under the second, item number two, where it says, the Foxborough School Committee at the time of the presentat, well, excuse me, prepared written remarks must be presented to the Foxborough School Committee at the time of the presentation, so that they may be attached to the minutes of the meeting at the committee's discretion. And that was a change recommended by Martha, because originally, we had originally written it that way.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five zero.
Very quickly, school committee policy adoption, BGB. As you see, it's bolded, we thought it wise to add a line, the Foxborough School Committee will vote to approve all policies following the second reading. That has been our practice in precedent, but our policy just didn't say that. It mentions first reading, but it never mentioned the second. So, it is a confusion.
It clarifies it for everybody.
So, we'll let you make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Authorized signatures, DGA, this was just a catch on our part, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, because this is the way we are doing it. And legally, it's the way we're required, that the superintendent and one school committee member will sign payrolls presented for approval.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, DG, E, DJE, I'm sorry, bidding requirements, you gotta watch.
Where'd you get that?
You know, it's the square lines after each third line.
We all knew what you meant, though.
Okay. Again, Paul Jackson made us feel very comfortable. It said that the bold will be purchased, talking about materials.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
DKC, got to wait this time, Martha. Again, we inserted, so the sentence reads, personnel and school department officials must obtain approval prior to incurring expenses to carry out their authorized duties to be reimbursed by the school department. So, that made sense to us.
Motion to accept.
Just, I'll second it, but then I have a comment for discussion, yeah. So, normally, Paul, you must give a blanket approval to people within certain situations, if they're able to make commitments on behalf of the district, I would assume. In other words, the way I read this, word for word, do people have to come before you every time they want to make an expenditure?
Basically.
And is that, is that current practice?
Yeah, we use requisition processes. Otherwise, what happens, when we get to the end of the fiscal year, we've got to make sure we have our money to cover the expenditures. If people went out and purchased things, and you don't know about it, then all of a sudden you're short.
Right. I'm just wondering if there's ever a situation where you have, you know, you give them a certain approval ahead of time, a blanket approval, and it's under certain-
Yeah, there are rare occasions, but yeah, that happens. I mean, Steve Massey and I, I like to use Steve as the example, the whipping boy, but he and I always had a discussion, it seems, on an annual basis, that something happens, and he's out in the middle of the field, and he doesn't have time to do requisition, and he goes and purchases things. That kind of stuff.
We do that.
You know, but, and when that does happen, we just say, well, let us know right away, and then we'll set the money aside, so we don't have the surprise.
And you've had those discussions ahead of time, so-
Absolutely, yeah.
And may I say that this bolded line was put in by Monsieur Jack Jackson.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, good discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
Next is FB, facilities planning. This was on hold, and we just, it was, it was pulled, it was sitting in our binders, and we thought we would give it a whirl, and thank you again to Mr. Paul Jackson. This is really important for us to, facilities planning, FB, it's really important, particularly with the work we're doing with the MSBA, and if there's work in the future, they actually demanded to see and to have a policy regarding this, which we didn't, because it was technically put on hold. And it's very complicated because of our town bylaw. So, with Mr. Jackson's help, this is what we were able to do. So, we're very, we feel very comfortable and confident of what we bring before you.
Okay, I have a motion. Your microphone.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to add one point, and we're going to check on the poll on the town bylaw reference, because isn't there a number that that should be cross-referenced? Just so the MSBA doesn't miss it? Because we have a town bylaw, so that should be the cross-reference?
I'll take care of it.
So, who's in favor? Beth, five zero.
To speed things up and to use your time wisely, I'd like to highlight three that are called academic achievement, IK. Martha, help me, I can't find my computer. Oh, student progress reports to parents, which is IKA, and then KBA, which is parent relations. The sentence will be the same.
Wait a minute, I'm at IK. IKAB, student progress reports.
What I would like to do, let me try it another way, thanks, Martha, is, we're on IK, academic achievement. What we did with three policies is that we wanted to, around academic achievement, progress reports to parents, and parent relations, we wanted to highlight, because what's really changed is that we now give a tool to parents and students to initiate and to get feedback. So, we felt it was important. And I'm going to say that the line is pretty much the same on those three, so that we're coherent and consistent. So, the line is, additionally, parents and students may regularly check academic progress online using PowerSchool software to monitor academic achievement in real time. On the, in the next page, it's, it's very, very similar. And I will just point out, and if you're comfortable, we've got a motion for all three, that when it came to parent relations, we wanted to use-
Which one is parent relations?
It's a KBA.
KBA.
It's a few, yeah, one, two, three.
We always talk in our meetings about strengthening the homeschool connection. And we actually use the words of a great leader, in fact, she was interviewed before us, when we used many of your ideas, Debbie Spinelli, when we were updating some of these policies. So, that one reads, to strengthen parent participation in the homeschool connection, Foxborough Public Schools provides the tool of PowerSchool software, which allows parents and students to monitor their academic progress on a regular basis in real time. Again, we thought those three threads and those three policies would be updated.
Okay. So, those three, those are the similarities, but I do think we have to take each one for a motion.
Okay. IK, academic achievement?
Yeah, so academic achievement, make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Move on to-
IKAB, student progress reports to parents and guardians.
Thank you.
Another motion?
No, I, oh, okay, I have a question.
Do you have a question?
Move it second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion, question?
Okay. Under a passing score in MCAS examination, first date mandate.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Martha, we're on IKAB, not on the one. You're on IKAB?
No, she had it open, so.
Oh, okay.
Are you trying to trick me?
No, Martha, no. I need your, I'll tell you.
They have the three together, that's why.
I thought you said all three together.
IKAB, we're just, I, they went separately, because they're separate reads. So, IKAB, student progress, a motion. So, all those in favor? And then, we're going to jump to parent relations. Here's the question. No, no.
No.
Which is KBA? That's, there's a few in between.
We're taking the three that all had some-
I don't have that one.
Yeah, it's in the-
KBA, it's in the back.
Is it after the?
Yeah, yes. It's got the same language as the other two.
Trying to be efficient, I probably caused us to spend extra time. My apologies.
KBA. Okay.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Okay, now, graduation requirements.
I will tell you that this was, it occurred to us that Foxborough High School has come to us now twice in changing their, with their curriculum updates. The number of credits has not changed, but how they achieve them has changed. Previously, in your book, it would spell out both the credits for specifying English and math. And now, that, we have a whole range of electives. So, it's the same number of 22 credits, how you arrive at that is a little different. So, this reflects what's in our handbook and what is current at the, at the high school. So, we thought that was wise to update that.
And the only change you had to make was the six under-
Was the six.
Yes, yes. And you had a question on that one?
I have a question on this one. Under a passing score in MCAS examination for state mandate, should we also include on that students on IEP with alternative testing or portfolio?
Yeah, they have an alternative portfolio process.
And that's approved?
That can be used.
In the what?
So, I'm just, I'm just trying to decide whether we need to be that specific, or whether passing score in the MCAS examination includes whether it was the training or the alternative portfolio.
I was actually thinking about it a different way, because there's occasionally discussion at the Board of Ed level about raising that. So, when you say state mandated, I think that would also cover portfolios and other demonstrations, because they have to go through a review process.
Appeals, yes.
And there's also an appeals process.
Two different things.
So, as long as the state has mandated what the rules are, I think we're probably okay just with that language, rather than spelling out all the rules, because you would-
Well, because the rules may change.
They do, yeah, they do change a little bit.
Under, under state mandate. So, for example, there's the-
We are following the state mandate of that here. I think that, you're right, there are three. I was thinking two, but actually, there are three routes, passing the written MCAS exam, submitting an alternative portfolio, especially if you're a student with severe disabilities, or if you didn't pass the MCAS written exam, and you tried a couple of times, because you're not a good test taker, your disability is related to that, written test-taking, you can put together an appeals portfolio to demonstrate at that point. So, I think this might cover us, as long as we understand that there are those different routes.
Are those all considered MCAS examinations?
Yes.
Yes.
They are. This is kind of an umbrella that covers all of them.
Okay.
Does that satisfy you?
Good discussion, though.
Martha, is that satisfying?
It does. I just would rather see us add something about including alternatives, so that it is, I mean, the mandate, it's such a, if it's going to change.
Yeah, maybe including-
The word alternative.
State, yeah.
MCAS examination.
State-approved alternatives, something like that, state-approved.
Something just that it's in there, and there's-
Yeah, state-approved.
State, including-
Including state-approved alternatives, because there are a couple.
Okay.
Including state-approved alternatives.
Right.
Let me just check with our master here. You got that there, Wendy? Including the state-approved alternatives, yeah.
It just makes the water.
Yeah, that does, yeah.
It's a good catch.
All right. So, do we have a motion to accept?
As amended.
As amended?
And I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Next is JFABC, and that is admission of transfer students. This is one of the two policies that is new. We are now required, and MASC sent this to us, we're required by the Department of Element, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, I don't, do you need me to read this one, Katie? It's, this shouldn't be read.
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, please, go ahead. Is this the discussion period? Well, yeah, we haven't made the motion yet.
Well, we can motion first.
Whatever you like.
Why don't we motion for, second, go ahead.
I read these earlier today and thought it sounded great. The only thing I'm wondering, even though this is a reference, a specific legal reference to Chapter 12, Section 11 of the regulations, but what I wondered about is, when, let's say a student is coming in from a homeschooling situation, we do the exact same thing. So, I just didn't know if this was specific to that legal reference, which is specifically about Commonwealth Charter schools, and it should be left as so, or that, or that we add to that, that this, the same policy applies to students who, who have been homeschooled? To be enrolled in school from homeschooling. Seems like they might do anything happens.
That's it. We were very concerned with that, and we went back and forth with Jim Hardy, like, what the heck do we need this? Because we automatically, we have kids transferring all the time, and we do it. Because we automatically, we have kids transferring in all the time, and we do it. And they said, no, it was a specific regulation that involved charter schools.
Okay, that's great.
So we could do that. We have a practice at a precedent that gives the principal the ultimate weigh-in to see where, after everything's reviewed, where people, where our students should transfer in at. But this was required just for charter schools.
It was specific to them.
So that's why.
Thanks, thanks.
There were two versions we gave the admin teams because we, we were really confused by them.
Any other further discussion on that? All those in favor? Five zero. Next one?
Student health services requirements, letter JLC. You'll see the bolded. We just wanted to, everything is, just as it should be with this policy, but we needed in the last couple of years to really talk about the district-wide emergency response book and the emergency plan, and add that, and, and reference that in. And this was also reviewed by the administrative team, and they felt strongly that that should also, was a positive way, that should be incorporated.
Okay. Make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one question. So should all of this paragraph be bolded? Kate, is this all new, or is it just the parts that are bold?
Just the parts that are bold.
Just the part that is bolded. We wrote and submitted that, we wrote with the help of the administrative team and then submitted to them for review. Because that's what we now call these things, Bruce.
Yeah.
They weren't in play and weren't created in, in September of '08.
No, they weren't.
Good.
Okay. Oh, so-
We now-
Yeah.
Okay, so we're now-
Any, any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor? Five zero. Next one?
Next is KCD, public gifts to the schools. You'll see the exact bold. We want all cash donations or gifts to be approved by us, and we want all gifts automatically to be the property of Foxborough Public Schools.
Very good.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Did we miss one there?
That was, that's the one we did as a triple.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I want to do it again.
Kate?
So the next to the last, we're getting there, we're almost there. The next one is IMG, animals in school. This is the second in, now mandated, so MASC sent it to us. We were really betwixt and between, so Bev and I punted to the, again, to the admin team, and I think, were there two versions of this one? Basically, our admin team took a look at it, and they felt very comfortable and confident with this. There are many reasons to have animals in school. There are corresponding, you know, Board of Health and other health issues, so this was to spell it out for the state. So we have it spelled out. If it's for animals in school, for educational purposes, special education, or, and yet still protecting student health and, and other things. The best way I could describe it.
Straightforward.
Yeah.
And this one's new. This is one of the new ones.
Make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? Six, five, zero.
I will also mention, there was a third kind of policy draft, but it's really a recommendation. It's called on concussions and handling students with concussions. The administrative team took a look at that. That is, that's actually being worked and looked at at the high school within the handbook, Student Council and the Handbook Group. It's, it was recommended that it would actually be not part of our policies, but put into student handbook and/or athletic coaches. So in case you, you, we had all received that so-called policy from MASC, but it's not really a policy, it's really an item for, for handbook. There is one last one, and that is the JLCD. Did I do that right, Martha?
Right.
Administering medicines to students. I'll just say very briefly, again, because we went through each and every one, we realized that certain things were missing, and we, if we didn't know, we called the experts. So in calling Sharon Kelly, we found out that, gee, although we approved this in 3/24/08, it very quickly became out of date. And so you see in bold, only, medicine will only be administered by a nurse. And Sharon actually gave us the language to, to help us do that, and then the administrative team concurred when they reviewed it. So medicine that needs to be given during a field trip will only be dispensed by the nurse and administered by the principal or their designee. And then we added number four because times have changed, and we do allow students with the nurse's input and parent's approval to carry EpiPen. So it is very important that we, that we add number four. Students with life-threatening allergies may possess and administer an EpiPen in the event of an emergency.
I'm just, I, yeah. Because sometimes you hear that, and it sounds like the only person ever giving medicine is a nurse. That's not what this says.
No.
So medicine that needs to be given during a field trip will only be dispensed by the nurse.
Dispensed.
And administered by the principal or the designee.
Thank you for clarifying.
That means the dosage, whatever it is. And there are, as you note in the addition of number four, there are other staff members trained in EpiPen administration, which can be considered a medicine.
I was going to ask a similar question. I'm sorry to have you interrupt.
No, I just want to say that it, it sounds like a blanket statement that there will be no one other than the nurse ever administering anything, but that actually isn't.
Well, no, it says it administers our principal or designee. What I'm more concerned about is what age group are we talking, it's going to be allowed to have an EpiPen on them, when you've got other kids that might have access to it inadvertently, and a little bit concerned about that. You know, what age group are we talking? I'm not comfortable with a first grader having an EpiPen in their, their backpack and other children possibly opening it, saying, what's this? I mean, that makes me a little bit uncomfortable.
This came up when we had our, our subcommittee two or three years ago about this, and the parents on the committee, I'm trying to recall if you can, how, I think the parents felt pretty strongly that it depends on the developmental age of the child and the child's own ability to do it. And the parents obviously felt they were the ones that could decide if the child-
That's where the discussion with the nurse and the parent were coming to play.
But I'm concerned about somebody getting into somebody else's backpack and coming across this and opening it, what is it? And inadvertently.
So not so much the child, who could be at any age, who could self-administer it, but more about access.
Right.
That other students, depending on the age they have.
Might not access.
Well, why don't we bring it back to the nurses for more clarification? Just in terms of prac, in terms of practice, what, you know, what do we do in terms of practice?
Accessibility of other students in a younger age.
Ms. Jackson?
That's a fair comment.
No, I just want to make sure you, so.
We're required by law to train our bus drivers twice a year on the administration.
No, I realize that. I'm, I'm just worried, I'm just worried about students with life-threatening allergies may possess and administer an EpiPen in the event of emergency. And if you've got a, a child that you feel is competent to give themselves an EpiPen, if they're in the first grade, Paul, I'm worried about that being in their backpack or on their possession, dropping it, some other student picking it up in that age group, not knowing what it says, and getting into trouble with it. I, I mean, you can't, a teacher can't have their eyes on everybody every second, and I just, you know, as a nurse, I, I find that a little bit unnerving.
You know, you raise a good point. Here, what Sharon Kelly, as our nurse leader had said, is, and she read over this numerous times, and we thought we should change for, or change the format of any of those, and she said, no, because it's really between her and the parent. You raise a good point. I think I'd either be happy to check with her, or I'm sure she would, would come and address that concern.
Right.
Because it's really part of the age appropriateness, part of that age appropriateness is that, you know, you could pull our principal. They may not allow that in, in the elementary schools because of that very reason, but I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
It's just, this, this makes-
She may not feel very confident in, in why, why this was okay, but let's answer that question.
Yeah, let's have the conversation with them.
And I want parents to feel comfortable that not everybody who, it's got to be the child that doesn't understand that, and kids are curious. And if you have a child, a special needs child, if I wouldn't, who's in an inclusion school, I wouldn't want to come across something like this. I'm just, I'm very uncomfortable with it.
Yeah.
Although I would, I would imagine there's probably a lot of work, though, that, that goes on between the, the nurse and that child before they embark on wherever they're going. And that there may be special attention paid to that child and where that, it's being contained, you know.
I do think we have safeguards. We just need to be able to explain.
But I think we definitely should have-
I just want there to be comfortable with it.
Let's explain them. No, I think that's exactly right.
Yeah, that's great. Would you like me to ask Sharon? And if I cannot get the insert two more satisfaction, then maybe she'd also come here.
Right, right. Or, or one of our nurses could do.
So we're going to kind of put this on hold?
Well, I don't know.
I think it's going to approve. I think it's going to approve. You just want it to approve in the second.
We're not approving.
So I'll make a motion.
And Wendy, do you want to make a note, needs more clarification?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, so you did want to?
I want to accept it because there are some kids who need it to be in the possession. I think we need to define it for parents.
Okay. So the second, before the second reading, we'll hopefully get some feedback. Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Okay, is that-
We finished.
Well, that's awesome.
Again, it was a lot of fun, but it was really-
We took a whole summer.
But I, I know, but we did take a long time. I feel like I'm bad news, but Kate and Bev, am I not, lest you think you're at the end of the ninth inning. The whole section on curriculum instruction that I reviewed hasn't come forward to you, so you're not, there are other sections of the policy book, correct?
Not a problem.
That are coming forward.
You know, it's an ongoing document, and the nice thing about this is it will be-
Is that the only section, Wendy, you think, the big curriculum instruction section?
And, and I'm suggesting that's a very good summer project. I'm suggesting it. It's a very, very good summer project. We're very busy in May and June. Very busy in May and June. We are very busy in May and June, I'll go on the record with that.
Was that a volunteer to take care of this?
It's a volunteer to delegate it out.
Debbie, so we'll clarify. Right, there's not that many. It's mostly, I did some cross-referencing if you remember, and I put in a couple of suggestions, and it's, nothing's big and there's nothing new. So it should be not that big and nothing new.
So we'll mention it next time, and again, it was great because we got to work with, our staff is exceptional, and we know we delivered a good product because we had input from everyone, so.
That's because it's such a good foundation to work with.
It was a good, it was, the book's in great shape.
And you don't delve into it, you get confused. What was that one about?
All right, we're going to move on to FY12 budget discussion and approval, Dr. Martin and Mr. Jackson.
Okay, thank you. And I want to, I want to start by thanking the school committee and the Board of Selectment for meeting last Tuesday. I think it was a very good meeting, and I think it clarified a lot of the financial aspects and the revenue side of the town where we'll be. I also want to thank, and they're here tonight, I also want to thank the members of the advisory committee for continuing to work with us during this process because I think it's been, I think it's been a, a good process where we've tried to get to a point where, where we can get a budget, hopefully approved at town meeting, and, and then be able to continue the good work that I think people are doing. We wanted to mention that, and we have a camera right on right now, so that's, people at home, families will know that you're actually here, which is probably good, so. Anyway, first slide, discuss, discussion and revised budget approval request tonight, April 4th. I just want to spend a couple of slides in, in reviewing. This is taken right from the very first slide that, that we discuss in December and into January, and then, and then the approval at the end of January that, that we need to do so that we can get the budget to the town. And I just want to go over those bullets again for, not so much for the committee because I think you've probably put them to memory, but certainly for the public. Request addresses the following areas. It maintains the current level of offerings. It continues a curriculum review process that we're very proud of. Maintains reasonable class sizes across the whole school system, and I know that, that Ben did some discussion about our overall numbers are down, but doesn't seem to be to a point where we can make reductions because they, they kind of blend across grade levels and, and elementary, middle, and high school levels as well. Funds special education requirements, which can, can be always an interesting discussion in the budget process. Maintain supplies and materials. I think that it's important to say that we've level funded those accounts, so we'll probably be buying some less, but we think our supplies and materials accounts are, are in good shape. The next slide is just a review of where you were on January 31st. You approved a budget of $27,530,44, which at that time was an increase of $577,351 or 2.14%. And during that discussion, we talked about, and this is where some, where we'll see some changes tonight, requests presented by program, school and program areas. We had a chance to review this with our principals and directors right here in January. At that time, we had two projected retirements were included in that first budget, you know, January 31st, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next few slides. We had no projected resignations at that time, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And we continue to, to look at grant salaries and expenses included as offsets, and that'll be an adjustment that we'll be making as well. This just goes over where we were with, where we've been with the town and how we've revised the revenue sources. The first one is across-the-board employee health insurance, office visit co-pays from $5 to $15. The, the town savings in that is, is projected to be $144,000, and that's based on discussions with our insurance carrier, MIIA, Maya, and they've given the town that projection. So it's changing, and that's something that we need to bargain. At this point in time, there may be a change in that at the legislature, the legislative governor and the legislature are working on this issue, and it may be that you can expedite the bargaining and get to a point where as long as, as long as your plan is equal or greater than the statewide plan, the group insurance commission plan, what people call the GIC, as long as you're not creating a plan that's, that's, doesn't give as much benefit as that or is equal to that. So we're hopeful that we can have all, all of our unions agree to this. So that's a projected, a revised revenue source. And then we've been talking about other co-pay changes, and I know that Kevin Pecos mentioned a couple the other night at our meeting around emergency room visits and a couple of other areas. So we're looking at overall plan design in our, in our discussion, so that's, that's something that we feel very confident about, that people will more line up, as people in the community have talked about, more line up with, with what more practice is around us, certainly. The third one, early retiree premium split change. This is a, this is a policy decision that I know you were involved in last Tuesday night in terms of discussion, but this is a policy decision by the Board of Selectment. And this would change the retirees' split in the premium side from what currently is 70-30, 70% by the town, 30% by the employee. The plan at this point is to, is to phase it in over two years, so it would become a 60% share for the town and a 40% share for the employee, and then a year later would be 50-50. Some of you may have read, and I know the committee discussed, and there was a presentation about it, that this was something that goes back. I think people are having trouble figuring out when it does go back to when, but this is something that many in the town believe should have been done years ago. So this is one that, the, the major one is the, the health, the, the ongoing costs of retiree health insurance and what each community has to budget for this according to the Gatsby 45 accounting practice. This, this does some of it, but I, I want to be clear, it doesn't do what, what they're recommending each town should do each year in order to cover that cost so that going forward, your costs are not, your fixed costs are not eaten up by these kinds of things where you won't be able to, you won't be able to offer the services that you currently offer. So this was in the operating budget as a fixed cost through much of our discussions late in the fall and through last week. And this, this is being tied to the proposed meals tax, and then, and we also agreed that if the meals tax does not pass at town meeting, that we would then have a conversation at our meetings in May and June about what do we do about our share of this, because we did agree that we would, we would then see this as a cost in the town and that we would did agree that we would then see this as a cost in the town and that we would have those discussions. So, I just want to be clear with everyone that at this point in time, this, as we go through the slides, we'll see that this gets us to continue to level service, and I think was an important shift that the Board of Selectmen agreed to and that the town manager and the town finance director recommended. So, to sum up in terms of where we are now, the original deficit that we discussed on Tuesday that I know that the town had been dealing with was $857,282. The reductions that are on the previous slide total to $614,000. So, our total current deficit, and that's shared with the schools and the town, is And as we've said during good times and bad times, when we have available revenue that exceeds some projections, we share in those good times at 70%. And there's been questions, I think, raised legitimately about 70%, but the questions don't seem to be coming as much when you're sharing on the deficit side for some reason. So, the deficit side, we would share that deficit at $170,297. So, that was our challenge finishing Tuesday night's meeting. And I had mentioned, and I know that Kevin Pecos, our town manager, had mentioned in his slides, we had already seen some things that were taking place in the last couple of months, and I want to talk about those now. So, the first number is what you voted on January 31st, and here's the adjustments. And I think some of you may remember that the town made an adjustment in their calculations. Obviously, with the, with what's going on with fuel prices that seem to change each day, Paul has done another projection, so there is an additional cost that Paul has projected out to be $16,072. But we've also had some staff changes. I call them, you know, retirements, resignations, leaves of absence. We have four retirements that people have announced their interest in retiring, that we've, even one that we heard about at the beginning of last week. So, what we typically do is we analyze what the current salary is or what the projected salary is for each one. And then we also look at any resignations and any leaves of absence, anything like that. So, we feel very confident that we will be able to adjust our personnel account by $86,369. And then I mentioned the other night that the circuit breaker, we've been hearing even at the day on the Hill at the State House on Tuesday, that we had been hearing some better news about the circuit breaker, I think from almost every legislator that spoke. And we had originally projected that that might be as much as $150,000, moving from about 40% reimbursement to, everyone was telling us 60 would probably be a pretty good number. I think we can be prudent in this, and I would recommend to the committee that we offset through this program, we offset through the circuit breaker program by $100,000. And when you add and then subtract those, we have our net change of $170,297. And that's why, that's why the one that you see is revised, because we picked up a little typo, but we wanted to tighten them back. So, anyway, what we're proposing now is a budget of $170,297 less than what we were proposing on January 31st. So, that number that we revised to is $27,359,747, or what calculates to be an increase of $407,054, which is a little over 1.5% from FY11 to FY12.
I have a question. I'm a little bit concerned about us going ahead and reducing our budget based on the premise that this is what the numbers are going to be. We all know historically, sometimes the state will come in with higher numbers. We can always reduce this number if we have to, but we can't raise it. So, if we go ahead and reduce it tonight by $170,000 and say the numbers come in higher, then I think we're stuck with that number, number one. I would rather us stay with the budget number that we have with the understanding that we know that if numbers come in less, that we will readjust our budget accordingly. Can we do that?
You can put in any number you want, actually.
Yeah.
And you can...
I'm just a little bit nervous about the moving target.
I know, but I do feel confident that this number allows us to have a level service budget. We have the retirements are built in. I would be less confident if we didn't have, if we didn't have the retirements already announced. I would be less confident, and I would be less confident if I was advocating that we put in all the $150,000 that we think the circuit breaker actually is going to bring back to us. So, I do think in terms of, you know, the work that we've been trying to do collaboratively, that this is a very solid number.
Yeah, but I remember when we had a joint meeting, remember with the town side back in November, and they were reducing their budget.
Right.
And I went to that meeting, and I was pretty adamant that we would not go into that and lower our number and then have to live by it, and with the understanding that whatever changes we had to make, we would make, and we did. So, I don't...
I guess here's my worry, Martha, with this, and I think it's a very good point. I worry that if the meals tax doesn't pass, then we have another $210,000 to discuss. So, if we move the number down safely now with what I think is in, in the bank, I guess is the best way to say it, that if we do have to go back for $210,000, I absolutely agree with your thinking, and I mentioned it briefly to Kevin and to the Board of Selectmen the other night, that, you know, as things change, because that $210,000 for us may actually change if, if in fact, there's a little bit more state aid, whether it's chapter 70 aid, whether it's more lottery aid, whatever it is. And we haven't heard from the House yet, and that's always tenuous in terms of, you know, what, you know, in, every year doing budgets like this, because you never know if, you know, I'd also worry that if the state, as they're deliberating, continuing to deliberate, that we don't have a good revenue number in March or April, as they're still doing this, you know, they could come in and say, "Well, you know, we tried to level fund chapter 70." I mean, we were hearing from Mike Whitmer at the MAS/MASC meeting, they were talking about a 5% cut across the board in both local aid and...
It's all the speculation, Chris, that makes you crazy after a while.
I agree.
And I think we're almost to a point here in Foxborough where it's time to move the town annual meeting, because unless you have your numbers in and they're etched in stone, I don't think it's fair to anybody to go to a town meeting on assumption.
Right.
Or false, you know, whatever. I just think, you know, Foxborough, it's high time they start thinking about moving their town meeting out, because it's just, I don't think it's fair to either side.
Right.
And if we don't work together collaboratively, then we need solid numbers, and we don't have that. We don't, we don't have it now. I don't, I don't think we're going to have it in a week or two. So, you can do what you want, but I just, I'm always wary of lowering the number and then having things come in higher, and then we have to live and die by it. I mean, we don't know how much, you know, staff changes, 86,369, we don't know what we're going to hire people back in at. So, you know, what if, you can't get people and you've got to pay a little bit higher, or you've got somebody that's got a lot of experience and they want to come in. That's, to me, that's a moving target, too. And I just, you know, the other thing is when you look at the revised revenue sources, what if the unions don't agree with the change in the co-pays when we're sitting down, we're bargaining with them? I mean, we've got some other serious issues here that we have to deal with that we're just, you know, it's like a wing and a prayer, hoping that they'll go along with this, and if they don't, they don't, and we're talking about big revenue.
I think if they don't, I think Kevin was right about this. I think if they don't, given the environment that we're in now, I think if they don't, you bargain to impasse.
Yeah.
And then, and then you go to arbitration. And I just, you know, I mean, again, I don't want to play our hand in negotiations here, but I just think that, I'd be surprised, I'd like to listen to an arbitrator's argument that a $5 co-pay is fair.
No, it isn't fair. But you know something, Chris? When we were talking about changes in health insurance, I was adamant way back when that we never, ever should have stuck to those $5 co-pays.
Right, I agree.
They were archaic, never should have happened, we shouldn't have done it. That was our golden opportunity back then.
I agree.
And we blew it. And now to turn around and ask somebody, you know, not to take raises and to have to change things, it's, I don't know. I think we've been a little bit of a fight on our hands.
The other, I think there's going to be a fight on our hands, but the other part of it that I didn't say that I should have, now that I look at, look back at the office visit, is the other piece to that is that the premiums are going to be lower for the employees.
Oh, absolutely.
So, there's about a $42,000 savings across the board. So, instead of a 10% increase, which is done, I mean, and that's imposed, then that's going to be less of an increase. And there's also a piece in there for, if you go to, that I know Kevin explained, and actually was in our, in our package, that if you go to the doctors more than four times, that you can take your $10 difference and be reimbursed by a health insurance fund that the town, that the town has.
Well, and that's one of the things that cannot be related to.
Exactly. And other communities have been doing that mitigation for years.
But you know what? I think realistically, too, I think the unions and the people who use these insurances have to sit down, everybody panics, "I don't want my $5 co-pay." Well, how many times did you go to the doctors last year?
Once?
None?
Right, that's what we've tried to say.
You've paid $345 more in premium to save $5. I mean, we just, we have to do a better job of selling this.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I think realistically, people just don't get it.
Right.
They don't get how to send away prescriptions, how much money they can spend. We have to do a better job.
We do.
And we've never done that before, and it's time.
I agree.
Martha, I think you raise a good point, though. A lot of those things that you're saying, they are unknowns. I mean, they're calculated knowns right now. We don't really know exactly.
I think there's a balance of knowns and unknowns, kind of back and forth, and I think that, I think we need to get a number to town, we need to get a number to the warrant. We need to get a number to town meeting. And I think that, I think that, you know, I think there was some good agreement from, you know, from last week's meeting, that if we think that this is the deficit at this point in time. I mean, there's always opportunities, I've done this in other districts, where, you know, you find that you don't have, or the money came in and it looked better, that you go back to town meeting, a special town meeting in the fall, and you say, "You know, we want to adjust because our special ed costs are rising," or "Our fuel costs could be rising still." You know, so you go back and you say, "Listen, you know, we were fair in April and May when we were working on this budget going into May's town meeting, and this is really where we are."
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, my understanding was, if you have unexpected expenses, you go back to the advisory committee, you don't go to town meeting, and you say, "Look, you know, this is what we've got." I mean, am I wrong? Who's behind it? Larry?
No, you're not wrong, but the advisory committee is lowering its reserve fund also.
No, I realize that.
It's going to be a lot less in there. But I think what Dr. Martis said, you go back to town, a special town meeting, and you just explain it, and you get the transfer.
Bruce, did you want to...
I thought the warrant was already printed, no?
No, it's going to be printed Friday.
Friday.
That's why it's important that we take a decision tonight. Go ahead, Bruce.
Just a few thoughts. First, I agree with Dr. Martis. I think last week's meeting was very productive, and I know we didn't come out of it with 100% consensus across both the committee and the selectmen, but I think we came out of it with pretty close to 100% consensus or certainly majority opinion. And so, I think we've had an opportunity to think through these actions and hear a lot of the rationale last week, and I think that was helpful. I think if these came to us for the first time tonight, I'd be, personally, I'd be more concerned. Second, I appreciate, Martha, your experience, because you've been through this a lot of times, and I completely agree with your point, and I think it's an important one to remember, that we can always go down on the number, we can't go up. The only way I get over that, though, in my own way of thinking, is, and after having gotten some feedback since last week's joint meeting, I think that the town wants us to continue to be as prudent as we can be.
Absolutely.
And so, personally, I'm okay with this, knowing we've got work to do, because what I like about it is it shows that we're moving our percent increase year to year down. We're still going to drive level services, but we're hearing the community, we're trying to keep driving the same quality of education, but we're going to keep tightening the belt just a little bit, little bit. So, to me, this shows that we're listening and we're moving in the right direction. That, you know, if Chris and Paul had the track record where they didn't have the right read, you know, historically, I'd have a concern, but I think, you know, after having done this a number of times, personally, I'm willing, I appreciate the risk you're articulating, and I agree with it. I'm willing to take it. I think it's important that we do. And you know what? If it didn't pass, we'd take one of these other actions, or we'd find somewhere else we'd have to close it.
The other tough thing on insurance is, where do the premiums go up? You know, there's no guarantee that they're going to go down, other than if you reduce some of these other things, but they can still have a price increase because they want it, the insurance company. So, we're at everybody's mercy, Bruce, we really are. You know, and this insurance thing is such a shell game. It is personally and professionally offensive. It really is at this point, because it's out of control.
Well, I think good points on both sides. And I mean, I share a lot of your thoughts, Bruce, about, you know, we did meet last week, we did, we've had time to think about this. I think we had a good discussion for the committee and for the public to understand the reasonings behind the numbers where we're at. And, you know, I think that we do have options, Martha, if we, if things come back favorably, favorably for us.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I would like to weigh in as well.
Of course, Kate, everyone should.
I agree with, you know, your opinions. I need to let you know, this is my eighth budget. We suck it up and we cut. I have never, ever been in a situation where we didn't have to cut or revise. I think we had a great and very productive meeting last week. I am very uncomfortable with this number. I really don't want to approve it tonight. I have no problem with our tentative plan. I have no problem with what we say at town meeting, because we have done that in the past, where we say we're ready, we're prepared, if need be, to cut, but I am not prepared to vote it this night. There are too many moving pieces and too many unknowns. We have a plan. I know we can execute and we can close a budget gap, but this, part of what we've been doing the last few, there are things that are unsustainable, so I don't really want to be backed into a corner. I don't really feel comfortable at all.
These are changes that we should make anyway. I mean, we're not hiding anything here. If we're talking about transparency, I don't know why we wouldn't reduce...
Our pieces are not as difficult as I think some of the ones on the town side.
I just don't know why, I would be coming back to you with this adjustment anyway.
I agree that, especially on the retirements, and that's a reason to move forward.
And we're being very prudent on the circuit breaker. So, there are two areas there that I think are the right areas. If I was saying that we hope we're going to get three more retirements, or we hope that two more people are going to leave the system, or we hope that one of our high-cost special ed students is moving, we're not, that's not hope. These are, these are done. These are done.
Okay.
And so, I think what we're doing is we're saying to the town, as we see these moving parts, if we saw, now, we made an adjustment in the bus fuel. That's an upward adjustment.
Well, and here's another, I'm sorry.
No, no, so I'm just saying that I should be coming to you anyway at this time of the year with these kinds of numbers, if I'm seeing them trending this way.
Thank you. You've helped persuade me, but I do need to tell my colleagues I am very still uncomfortable with many of the moving pieces.
Yeah, that's fair. But think about it this way. We're talking about less than 1% of our budget.
Right.
I believe that we can find less than 1% of our budget if we have to. So, I don't think Chris is suggesting a dramatic change. To me, this is a pragmatic one. I think you and Martha are right on. I think we've got a lot of open...
Eight years.
But we're talking about $170,000. So, to me, I mean, we've all said there's not a lot of fluff in our budget. We don't know where it is, but I know we can find $170,000 if we have to. That's my opinion.
I think what scares me is the revised revenue sources, and if we don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, when we have a period shift, and then we... So, they vary that, but we're, you know, but we'll deal with what we have to deal with, what we have to deal with, but that, to me, is very concerning.
Yeah, I think we are taking, you know, a risk. I think it's a small risk that is, that shows that we are, we want to live up to our side of what we need to do in tough times. To me, it's a, you know, it's a, like I said, a less than 1% risk. So, personally, I'm comfortable. You know, guys don't have to.
We've always taken that risk. We have given it and given it and given it. I will tell you the reason I'm also uncomfortable is this committee never voted the $543,000 on stimulus. We don't even have that at our backs anymore. So, I, you know, I know we're going to work to close this, but these are the kind of moving pieces that, quite honestly, I'm uncomfortable with, because it's been level service and level service, and every year we've given and cut, and now we don't have that little bit in the bank that we said we were saving. Yeah, we would be, we've always been cooperative in closing with the town, but now the whole thing has been given its entirety, and we don't have that backup.
I think the other thing, too, related, and Debbie, this will be more for you, you know, next year, I think we're going to have to, this board is probably going to have to continue to look at policy decisions on budget pretty closely. I mean, we always say for granted, we take our share of the town gap, and I'm not proposing that we shouldn't, but I think we need to start to look at every policy decision we make, if it's going to get this tight. So, I think just going forward, that'll, no, I know we've talked about, you know, we need to look carefully at every step.
Eight years, I don't know that we've done it any other different but to look carefully, and I can tell you, I am really that concerned. But, Dr. Martis, you persuaded me. I just, I think it's all relevant in the discussion.
I think the good news in this is that, you know, this could be the fourth consecutive year that we don't lay off a person. And, you know, I talk to my colleagues all the time about this, and we're one of the few communities in Massachusetts and probably one of the few communities across the country who've been able to do this. So, that kind of prudent planning, and in some cases, risk-taking, I mean, budgets are fluid, we all know that. And so, I think, I think at this point in time, you know, I recommend that we continue to work with the town, and we continue to build on that good meeting that we had last Tuesday, and that we move ahead with a number that I think we left that meeting saying, "Listen, we'll work on that with you," and, you know, and continue to do that.
So, we have to take a risk? We aren't even using, when you look at the rest of the country, the world, we are not even talking about the word austere. I think we have a long way to go before we can't step forward with our part of saving less than 1%. So, I'm ready to vote.
Do I have a motion, then?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, to accept the revised budget request.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and any further discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Sorry, Kate, is second a motion?
Kate did.
I think it is good that we had the discussion, guys. I really do think that...
No, I think it's very important to have that discussion, because I think, I think the public needs to know that we're squeezing this more and more. And then my last slide is, this is, this will be, this will be a big vote for us. Big vote for us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Martis, Mr. Jackson, and we're going to move on to FY11, monthly budget summary. budget summary. Mr. Jackson and Dr. Martis.
I think, I think one of the, you know, again, having, you know, worked on four of these here, in terms of spending, I remember, you know, two years ago, we were talking, we had frozen all of our spending accounts, and we'd been working. And then, and so this year, we, as you can see in looking at all of the items that Paul has articulated, our budget is continuing to trend in the right direction, which, you know, which we're very pleased about. So Paul, I don't know if you want to articulate some of the areas that you've seen, some of the major areas.
Sure. We've seen an increase since the last statement of $77,000 to the positive. The major salary changes, a negative $23,000 for maternity and medical leaves. We did some personnel changes, which netted a positive $8,300. We reallocated and unfilled a position in the technology department. Reprojection monitors, crossing guards in transportation, positive $1,400. Reprojection of sub and overtime accounts and maintenance, $7,700 to the good. Reprojection of sub and S L B B, a sick leave buyback, positive $19,881. Additionally, we absorbed $24,397 in special education salaries by a, in effect, the second year of a one-time federal A R, it's actually A R R A grant. We lost $2,000 on the expense side in bus fuel. We picked up an additional $4,500 on special education tuitions. We picked up $10,000 on special education transportation. This is out of district transportation, which we project on a regular basis, monthly. And we picked up $20,000 of special education contract therapy monies that we don't think we'll end up spending. And we have a net deficit of $10,141, an additional deficit on the heat electric accounts. We've had a very cold winter and a very cold spring. So, and more detail is on the actual budget summary statement, so that this year, we're in a much better position in terms of how we're trending than we have been in past years. And it still continues to look in a positive fashion, so I'm cautiously optimistic.
So really, it just highlights special ed has such an impact on us, positive or negative. In this case, positive. Special ed's helping us. Maternity and medical is costing us more than we expected, and bus fuel is more expensive than we thought, or projected.
Does he need a motion to accept-
Yes, please.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you.
I'd like one comment about this. If we're going to have a deficit, I'm going to go out on a limb, be it good, bad, or indifferent, that if we do have a surplus this year, that we work long and hard at items that might impact student achievement, that we will not be able to clean the budget next year, and make sure that we keep that money here and allocate it to those things, so that, I mean, if the well is dry, it's dry for next year. But if this is money that we've saved in particular areas, I really would like this committee to take a long, hard look before we quote, "turn back money to the town," to make sure that we have everything that we need for next year.
That's fair.
And not just say, okay, we've got this money. Let's give it back. I think we need to really take a look at things.
In years past, we've come up with lists of things that-
Right, right. But I really want to-
We've offered to the committee that will, that we've, I think we did, we've done that in our two meetings in June, if I recall, where we have a better idea of what the numbers look like.
But Martha, I think it's good that we're going to push it this year, because we've all held back.
I'm just, I'm saying it right up front, that we'll get your hopes up, because I'm sure there's going to be things that, if it's going to impact student achievement, then I'm all for keeping it here and getting the little things that we've kind of put on hold a little bit.
I think that's a great idea.
Just so you know, it's no surprise, I'm bringing it up.
Good idea, Martha. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to other matters. I have one matter. We are going to be conducting assistant superintendent search, and I would like to have representation on that search committee, of two members of our committee. And I would like to ask Kate and Ben to participate, and have the committee-
I'll make a motion that-
Thank you.
And I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. So Kate and Ben, thank you very much for participating.
Would you like a little update on where we are on the process?
I would love it. That would be awesome.
As you know, the position was advertised the very beginning of March, March 2nd, and we had a March 15th close of applications. We have received 34 applications. So we continue to be a destination of choice, as we call it, which is wonderful. We think it's a really strong pool. Very happy with that. This week, on Wednesday, April 6th, we've scheduled our first session to screen the candidates and, for preliminary interviews. And so that will happen this week. Our intention is then to conduct the interviews over the next couple of weeks. And if all moves along optimally, we hope to have name or names to you by the end of the month. That being said, it may take a little bit longer than that. So, that's the plan as it stands. So, 34 applicants, a really good number. Very pleased with that.
Thirty-four?
Yes.
We have all of those to review?
That's what you was volunteering for.
Finish the policy.
I welcome to those Manal offers that show up in our mailbox.
I believe it was just voted, so there's no stakeout.
These will be given on the meeting.
I do, I do want to offer the possibility, though, that my definition of fund might have variation on the theme of what Kate offered.
And when do you see the copy of the count next month, when the reports are reviewed?
Perhaps.
I, I just want to know who's helping you copy them this time. I, I mean, I was a committee member who helped lap them.
I know.
I'm going, I'm going to say-
Like the bottle, I could be your copy gal.
No, actually, you will be happy to know Debbie Marlonas already did all the party. So, thank you, Debbie Marlonas. Yeah, she did. We call it a factory.
I did all-
She took the factory on herself and did a great job.
Any, anyone else have anything other, other matters?
Yes, I do, as a matter of fact. I would just like to compliment our high school students. This came home a couple of weeks ago. It's, let's get a picture of this. It is a really neat, they got it, right, on the camera?
Yeah.
This is a new newspaper that they started, and it's exciting. I've seen different attempts over my 16 years' experience of high school. This is so professional. It is like, just as things keep improving, just the graphics, the writing is tremendous. And I understand it will now be distributed through the Foxborough Reporter, when it comes out again in the feature, in the future. And it's just really, if you've not gotten a copy of it, we really, this is something else we need to market. When you look at what our kids were able to produce, this, to me, is a benchmark for some of the, the academic achievement that goes on. It's just amazing to me. So I wanted to compliment the advisor and all the students who, because it's not, it's not a club, it's across the population that, that write stories. And I just, I thought it was just tremendous.
Okay. Kate, I'm sorry, Martha?
Ben DeRima. I caught the last part of it when I was at home. For anybody who's, who's involved in the music program, what a, a great accomplishment these students that they're, I, I've said it over and over, they are accomplished musicians by the time they graduate from the school system. But what a great thing for the younger kids to see. And, and it's amazing, you listen to this age group, and then you listen to the next one, and then, then you see them in the high school band. And it's got to be an inspiration for these young kids to keep practicing, keep playing, and stay involved with the music program. We are second to none. We have an unbelievable program. And I'm always impressed when I see my grandson playing his clarinet, and like, wow, looks like the keys are moving with the music.
Something's coming out of there.
Something's coming out. And I see the foot tapping, and it's, you know, it's such an accomplishment for these kids. But what a, what a great night. And when you, when you see that many students fill that, that gymnasium floor, it's impressive.
You know, I was there, too. And I, it is, it's, you did a great job of describing it. It's the camaraderie of all of these music lovers. It was just, it's, it's one of my favorite music events.
The respect for one another. You can hear a pin drop when they go from one to the other. But I have to tell you, from my couch, it was a little more.
Yeah, it was great.
I had a, just building on that for a minute. I didn't plan to share this, but I had a very informal discussion with Mr. Massey afterwards. Excuse me. Sorry, too many airplane rides. I was in Chicago this morning. I went up to Mr. Massey, I've never met Mr. Massey, and so I introduced myself and said, I've got a fifth grader who's just beginning to process, and thank you very much. And we got into this very interesting discussion about leadership, and about how he's developed the program. And I said, would you, if we wanted to come talk to you about that, would you talk to us more about how you built the music program, how the leadership? And he said, I would love to. I love, that's one of my favorite topics. And I thought, huh, all right. I said, we'll talk to the committee, and we'll talk to the new superintendent, and we'll talk to Mr. Massey.
When our students go off and compete-
I think you're coughing, you can't call him Steve.
I only met him once.
You'll get to Steve. When, when our kids go off to competition, you know, I know Bev's been in it, and you'll see some kids from other communities, and, you know, everybody goes to their own speed. But our students are always in suits and ties, and very professional. You see some kids, they just dress the way they want to dress or whatever. I, I think it speaks volume for the character of our, our professional students that go out to these, you know, venues and perform for us. And they represent us. And the, the feedback usually is that they're very impressed with how Foxborough students carry themselves. And that's because of, of Mr. Massey and his leadership, and what he expects, and the way these students respond to him, which is so important. I mean, when you've got somebody who, who has such high standards, and the students want to match it, that's, that's outstanding. And that's what we have here. It's very impressive. And as you go up through the ranks, you will see that more and more.
See it more and more.
Yeah, you really do. It's where you're going.
Yeah. And I think, like you said, you know, I think he's come and talked to us, to us, and maybe in the past, about leadership. I think it would be timely for him to come again. I mean, and he exemplifies that in terms of his leadership.
Well, I think before the school year ends, we were looking, this is going to be a music review this year.
He's actually on a review. We have a review.
So he will be here, and I'll make sure he talks about that in context with the music review.
I said to him, you know, if we wanted to do everything you've done with Foxborough music across the rest of the school system, could we do that? He said, well, I, I only control the music.
It's a more complex situation. But I also, moving along, Taylor School Spring Flame this Saturday. Just want to compliment all the parents who worked on that. It was a lot of fun for the kids. And I know they do an awful lot to raise money, and they work really hard. So I want to compliment the parents. It was a really fun time. And I just got a kick out of, they had like a medical tent, it was in the room.
Oh, my God.
Where they put fake bandages. It was very popular. So I just thought that was kind of novel. It was-
That's innovative.
It was great.
And I didn't check my record, I won a basket again.
Oh, wow. I think it's fixed.
I just bought a lot of tickets. We're going to tie it.
I know.
Did you want to mention Faces again, Friday?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Faces Friday night, at Lakeview Pavilion. There's still some tickets available, so give us a call, and we'd love to see you there. It's going to be a wonderful night.
What time does it start, Martha?
Seven o'clock is a meal, so if you haven't gotten your reservation in for a meal order, we need to hear from you within the next day or two, please. We, I'm not on the committee, but I'm, I'm, like I said, our official cheerleader.
And maybe you all can win a basket.
That's right.
Oh, yeah. We have Faces, yes. Anyone else? No? Okay. Ben?
We will be going into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. As this open meeting may be a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, the committee will not return to open session. And yes, I would like a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And now we, any discussion? Okay, so we need a roll call to go into-
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.